So, welcome everyone. This is the FY twenty four public hearing presentation for the Mount Vernon School District. We're very happy to have you here. We've had three board members present. We're expecting one more shortly who is stuck in traffic. And I will let Mr. Chamberlain give us a little intro and.
Happy to. Just it's really my honor and privilege to serve as your interim superintendent for the Mount Vernon School District. It really is a joy to to come over here and work with Tom and the folks. Tonight, we are on the circuit of a public hearing for the very, very important FY twenty four budget. The purpose of tonight is to get feedback. Can we talk about where the board's at? Answer any questions and then the board decides to send. But the numbers and the values over to deliver it. It is, it has been a budget process that we started in October. And had regular meetings to discuss initiatives and areas of focus. And just from my perspective as your interim superintendent, I really do believe that the current structure and the current approach to public education is working extremely well. You're gonna hear tonight from the board and Amy, it may be some budget challenges that we're facing. And the reasons why and how we believe it looks best to approach them. Certainly look forward to gathering feedback from the community tonight. Thank you so much for being here. I know it's a very busy time and those of you also participated in the superintendent search earlier, just thank you for your time. To my right is actually extraordinary business minister Amy Facy, who's been digging in on this for a long time. And I appreciate the board's work, steady work on trying to figure it out. Look forward to getting feedback tonight. So, welcome. Thank you so much for being.
Can I ask a question? I realize that if I looked at the school calendar, it there's a so we can board or I'm sorry, SAU board meeting at seven, are we going to be cut short to facilitate that meeting?
They said they would wait for this meeting to finish.
Thank you.
In our dry run, Eileen, also, we we did pretty good with timing.
Well, you don't get my questions yet.
I know, but I we should have plenty of time for all of our questions.
I just wanna make sure.
Yep, no worries there. Okay, friends, so if you would advance us to our primary slide. So, in years past, what we've tried to do is highlight, you know, what the major trends or stories are. So, we're starting off again with the story here. There is, there are some challenges here and there are some opportunities. So, what you'll see as we go through our budget presentation is that we do have an increase in student services costs. The primary drivers of that are the transportation, transportation costs and student need. We have an increase in the AMS tuition that is based on the number of students and also the average cost per pupil. Then we have a competitive wage adjustment for non-union employees. This is seen in our food service staff. We also have some facilities and office staff. The main driver here is being able to to maintain the current staff that we have and make sure that we can actually get staff to fill this, to fill open positions. Because the market is very competitive right now. We've got inflation as a factor. We're seeing that in gas prices, other utility prices and facilities, service contracts. And finally, here we have our continued commitment to risk management and investment in our capital reserves. So, those are the facilities funds. We also have our obligations to special education and our health and dental insurance. We'll talk about, we'll talk about that and potential impact of what that does to our budget. Okay, so if we can advance, we're just gonna dive right into our operating budget review. So, this is article two. There's no major shift in wording year to year, so it should look pretty familiar. I'll go ahead and read it. Shall the Mount Vernon School District raise and appropriate an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrant articles and other appropriations voted separately? The amounts set forth on the budget posted with the warrant were as amended by the vote of the first session for the purposes set forth therein, totaling six million, three hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. Should this article be defeated, the default budget shall be six million, two hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred four dollars, which is the same as last year with certain adjustments that are required by previous action of the Mount Vernon School District or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA forty thirteen to take up the issue of a revised operating budget. This is a majority vote required. And what we're going to do in the next few slides is take a look at the breakdown of this budget and the default calculation so that everybody is informed and we can ask questions after that. So, if we can move forward. This is a high-level executive summary. Our FY twenty-three operating budget to the FY twenty-four proposed, there is a four hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred dollar change, which does represent eight point one percent. That is much larger than in years past, but there's, we'll go through why. The FY twenty-three operating budget to the FY twenty-four default is a six point seven percent change. Again, that's three hundred and ninety-three thousand and fifty-four dollars. The difference between the default and the proposed is one point four percent. So, that's basically the wiggle room. The only wiggle room that we have is eighty-three thousand, one forty-six. And we'll dig into all of the details on that. We okay moving forward a slide? We can always come back. Okay, so here we have our salary and benefit budget assumptions. Again, just giving some background into the major drivers of the budget. With salary and benefits, we are in the third year of our MBEA contract that does expire in twenty twenty-five. We do have a five percent market adjustment for the non-union employees. So, that was the the piece in the beginning that we talked about with making our wages more competitive. We're really low, especially in food service. So, that's why the board would like to make that adjustment to make sure that we can, we can get people into the positions that are open and keep them. The second driver here is our health and dental insurance employer contribution rate. So, there has been a four point one percent increase for health insurance and a one point five percent increase for dental insurance. It's just the going increase unfortunately. Finally, we have the New Hampshire retirement employer contribution rate. There is a decrease in the, in the contribution, one point three eight percent decrease. So, that goes to twenty-one point oh two to nineteen point six four for teachers. And it's down point five three percent for non-teachers, so fourteen point oh six to thirteen point five three. We will talk more about enrollment projections as we go, but this is the enrollment projections which were based on the NESTECH report, which I believe was just updated. We received the report yesterday, so. So, you'll see that the FY twenty-three and twenty-four projections look flat. And then there's a rise going forward. With NESTECH, we are early in the process with having them do our enrollment projections. So, as time goes on, this projection should be more accurate. Staffing levels, there's really no story here, no change, but just so that you can see the breakdown, it's pretty identical. This was updated as well with the new numbers, so.
Can, can we, if we call in, can we get copies of these slides, column slides?
Yeah.
Because this is information I was researching today. And this information isn't in last year's town report. The number of students per grade per teacher. So, in order for me to look forward, I need this.
Yes.
Thank you.
Luke and Eileen email Abby. Okay. Eileen, do you have Abby's email address?
Yes.
Okay.
And you can see Amy too.
Yep. Get this to you as well.
Okay.
Oh, no problem.
Or I can just tomorrow, I'll email you asking for it.
So, you want this slide presentation?
Yes.
I'll email it to you right now. You'll have it tomorrow.
Amazing.
There you go. Okay, so we can move forward a slide. Then we're on certified staffing. Again, here, no proposed changes. We've been very stable with our staffing, as you can see, so there's really no story here. Our non-certified staffing, pretty much the same thing. We have a minor change in custodial staff. I mean, it's negligible, point, point two.
Just allows us, we could not fill a position. So, we had to make it a little bit bigger and adjust the wage. This was an open position through a contracted service and we believe this is the best way to go. That's what happened.
Our budget by category. So, here you'll see the breakdown. This is what gets us to the eight point one percent. So, if you, if you look down the bottom right-hand corner, our eight point one percent total change. So, that right column is gonna show you which categories are responsible for the change, okay? The primary drivers monetarily are, you're gonna see our student services in line two. And then if you go down a bit more is curriculum, okay? There is the largest percent change in transportation. So, there's thirty-three percent increase in transportation costs between FY twenty-three and FY twenty-four proposed. There's a.
We do a bus contract, correct?
Yes.
When does it expire?
On the regular ed bus contract, we're in year one of fourth, we're in year two. Okay, we had it last year, so. And then for the special ed contract, that is expiring this year and we'll be having a new contract next year. And while we go, I'll get the dates for you on the, the regular ed.
Thank you.
Yep.
Because I know gas, we do have to pay extra for the fuel regardless of the bus contract.
Student services, you'll see a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollar change, so that represents a fifteen percent increase. That's directly tied to student needs, so that is a legal obligation. Our facilities, there is an eleven percent change. So, with facilities, again, that is, that includes salary and benefit market adjustments, utilities, preventative maintenance contracts. Yeah.
So, with student services, special ed?
Yes, thank you. They should say that. Somehow.
So, student services is a little bit more comprehensive. It includes special education. It also includes some other areas as well. Under, it can be our, under student services, it can be, it's called our five oh four opportunity. It can also be, five oh four is a different federal law. It's not special education, it's by access as opposed to accommodations. So, student services is more broad, so it does include special ed, but also sometimes nursing can be under student services. School council can be under student services. So, it's more broad, but the largest component and it's not close is special education.
So, are we able to identify that component? So, if you looked at the budget line by line, I think we can identify, like if there's like the nursing piece of that, yes.
It's like a firework, if we look at that. Sheet and you can't manipulate it to hide columns or anything and it's just a disaster.
The bulk of this is special education.
Yes, the best. And if you want us to get you the, the subcategory increase, we can happily.
Yeah. But the bulk here really is, is a special ed driver.
Thank you. So, the bus contract is a five-year contract. And the first year was FY twenty-two and it goes through FY twenty-seven, twenty. Yeah. Yeah, so, so July one, twenty-one through June thirty of twenty twenty-six. And so, how can it be up thirty-three percent in the second year?
It also includes special education transportation.
No, wait a minute, wait a minute, we're talking. Oh, I'm sorry, you're. Sorry, repeat that.
So, there's a special ed transportation component and a bus, that's a separate company.
Okay, so.
I'm just frustrated with trying to understand for the contract impact is versus something like that because contracts are supposed to be contracts and they get carried for, but then you see something like that, but seventy thousand dollars more and there's no way to know why.
So, well, the notes that I, that we put in here that it's both regular and special ed transportation costs plus the fuel increases.
And so, we were in a four-year contract for special education transportation. And that contract has expired. We put it out to bid for a formal RFP process. And we had three vendors participate in a pre-bid conference. Only one vendor submitted a, a formal bid. And we have evaluated that bid and so going forward, we will be able to project and predict because we'll be in the first year of a committed and as you discussed, a whole contract, but because we were going from a very historical contract and things have changed since we started that contract for years, especially in transportation drastically. So, there is a significant change this year because we put it out to bid and it's a different world than it was four years ago.
Okay.
And but going forward, our hope is to have a multi-year contract with our option. But we're working with that one vendor now to finalize the contract. But the numbers that are included are based on that bid that we did receive.
So, the only change we should see going forward, once you have contracts in place, is gas prices.
And so, we can get you, once it's open, we can get you a copy of it, but it's gas price, but it's also, they increased the cost because their employees get increases. Their health insurance increases. So, the year-to-year cost increases marginally, not like it is now. It's a huge jump because we went from an old contract to new. But it's, I can't tell, look you in the eye and say it's just gas. Because they also increased the overall cost of a run based on their benefits and things they have to do for their drivers.
But also, if there's a change in, in student need, like if there's, if there's an additional need for special ed transportation, you could see that line increase, correct? I mean, you could, so that, that might go up.
Understood.
Yeah, that, that's what I think of when I think what could change in that line.
And so, how long will this new sped bus contract be for?
We, we hope five years, but we're hoping for three years and then some options that we would have. So, that's in negotiations with the vendor, but it could be straight five, but we try to get as much flexibility in our side of the contract as possible, so it's in negotiations as we speak. Next one.
I think, I think we had a couple more lines on that slide, sorry. So, we have the, do we talk about facilities? I think we did. Yeah, the facilities line we've gotten to. So, the administrative line, that's an eight percent increase from FY twenty-three to twenty-four proposed, just under sixty thousand dollars. That's the SEU assessment salaries, benefits, market adjustments there again. Curriculum is again salaries. There's substitute, subs are in there. AMS tuition is in there. The AMS tuition is the major change there, so that's a hun, just, just under one oh two six. So, one hundred and two, five eighty-two is the tuition change. There's also a teacher salary change based on the contract. That's just under fifty thousand, so that's forty-nine, nine sixty-four. And the remaining fifteen thousand is for subs, long and short term. Just to give you that breakdown, because I was curious there too on what, if anybody wanted that breakdown.
I assume the number of students who are tuitioning to, the middle school will show up later. On a different slide.
I can get that. If not, we'll get it from.
Yeah, that's, I mean.
Yeah. I mean, the, the number, our number of students doesn't tend to fluctuate too much, but the percentage of our students in the pool can change, right? If the AMS population goes up or down, then our percentage, our tuition can change based on the average daily membership. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's why we see a lot of shifts there. Then our food service line, it's relatively flat, one percent, one percent increase. That's again, the, the salary benefits and market adjustments there that we were talking about earlier. And then in technology, we actually have a fourteen percent decrease. That's because laptops got removed from the budget and they're getting paid out of S R funds.
Just getting out of what?
S R funds. So, the S R.
So, federal grant responds to the pandemic.
We can go into our default calculation. So, when we're talking about the default, we're taking all of the contractual obligations. We'll be moving the warrant articles and coming up with the number at the bottom, so you can start with the, with the number at the top. And then we add in the things that are contractually obligated and that's how we get the default at the bottom. Okay?
What warrant article are you removing? That doesn't.
That's the facilities trust.
When last year we voted.
We voted.
Isn't that a separate warrant article?
Yeah, that's why it's not included in the default calculation. It's not, it doesn't, oh. Yeah.
Doesn't have a minus in front of it.
Is that confusing to you?
Yes, I'm just, I'm because there were other, was there other warrant articles? I'm trying to, well, I could look.
That's last year. Or this current year, that fifty thousand of this current year is fifty thousand, not the additional ones for FY twenty-four. So, to, to do the calculation.
Oh, I, okay, because we took out fifty, so don't do after and, okay, I'll just believe it.
And you want to explain that one? So, so this is the calculation to go from the current year's budget to a default budget. Right, so you don't want to include that fifty thousand in the default. That wouldn't be, that wouldn't be appropriate. That would be adding to the default in a way that you wouldn't want to add. So, you need that taken out. Because the, the default calculation is based, is primarily this current year's budget with certain contractual changes. So, you want to make sure you remove that fifty thousand, otherwise you're gonna have a default that's fifty thousand dollars more. Than with the appropriate.
Yeah. Okay.
It's a positive for the taxpayer to take the fifty thousand out. Because the default is fifty thousand dollars less.
Because the warrant is reported separately.
Yeah.
I know, that's why I'm wondering why they're including it in the default budget.
It's the.
Okay, it's just, and then tuition goes down. No, uh, yes.
That's a contract.
Yeah.
So, those are all contractual.
Okay.
Obligations.
So, the tuition, that would include like to the middle school.
Yep.
And it's go, and it is up in one point seven percent, is that correct?
Say that one more time, Eileen.
So, the tuition to the middle school would go up one point seven percent.
Correct.
So, that in looking at this year's budget to next year's, the increase is only one, I guess. I guess, why are we paying less here than we are in the original budget? It would seem to me if you're sending X students to the middle school, it's gonna cost you the same regardless. From one year to the next.
So, here it's on a separate line. That is a little bit confusing. What that, that it's on a separate line. Here's the tuition is called out separately here.
And it's not.
When we look at it on the prior slide, there's not just a tuition line, do you know what I mean? So, it's hard, it's hard to say apples to apples there. Do you know what I mean, Amy?
This is the default and the default break, some of this.
The default breaks it out differently.
This is previous slide said curriculum not.
Yes, that's, yeah, that's what I was just.
Because curriculum in the, is overall in the, they approve.
Can I just clarify though, where you're talking about three separate budgets? The slide prior, if you want to go to budget by category, that's the change from the current budget to the proposed budget. If you go to the next slide, this is the change from the current budget to the default calculation. There are three separate things and there's three, the previous slide is breaking it down for you. This is showing how you calculate the default. So, tuition is a major contractual obligation, which is why it's called out here separately because it, it explains such a large change from the current twenty-three budget to the default. So, that's why it's called out.
And then the proposed slide, which is coming up next, is gonna add on to this, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
So, there's three budgets. You're going from your FY twenty-three.
Yep.
Current year to a default calculation.
Yep.
And then to a proposed budget.
Yep. Okay, do, do you, I mean, I can read through line by line, but.
No, no, no.
It is.
If the terminology was the same from one to the next to the next, be a whole lot easier to understand.
So, it can't be the same from proposed to default because some things are in the pro, proposed that are not in the.
May I, can I illustrate something? So, under curriculum, there's, you say it was a larger number than previous slide? Because as part of curriculum, tuition is the only thing that is required on the default. Is that correct?
No.
So, there are other things that are part of curriculum that are proposed.
Salaries and benefits, it's also part of that curriculum number, correct?
Right.
So, there's a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars of that curriculum number that's in the default.
Yeah.
So, there is another ten or twelve thousand dollars there for something else.
So, those, there's not a whole category. That, that's, yeah, I think that's the difference is that the prior slide was showing you by category, the major drivers. Because we wanted to be clear on where it's coming from and then we're kind of digging down deeper into the line-by-line detail.
So, in the last one, it was everything included in curriculum. This is the, of the next slide is showing what we are contractually obligated to spend.
By.
Some of that curriculum fund amount, we are not required.
So, the bottom line, if the, if the budget does not pass, it's a six point seven percent increase, no matter what. That's what we're dealing with. Contractual obligations put us up six point seven percent. It's a lot larger ten, eight years past.
Yeah.
I don't like having to tell you that. But it is. So, we've got a six point seven percent increase this year. If we move down to the next slide, this is gonna, thank you so much. This is gonna give us our small, actually like the one point four percent. This is where we usually come to you and say, we've got a, we're almost, we're almost flat. Like, I would love to tell you it's only one point four percent, but the proposed budget calculation that is not, this is not contractually obligated. While some of it, I mean, transportation, we have to, we have to pay transportation, but it can't be included in the default calculation. So, I'd love to be able to tell you that it's actually lower than one point four percent. It technically is because we still have to pay the transportation costs, whether you vote for the proposed budget or you don't. Okay, so I, I also don't love the way that that happens in budgeting, the transportation costs, but it's a fact. So, the, the, the very small pieces that we've got going on here are a, a little, like a little with the facilities, right? Like, the, the non-union adjustment. And the small facility change, the sixteen, so that's a new floor extractor, like it's equipment, utilities, preventative maintenance contracts. All stuff that we've committed to as a town and as a board, to making sure that our investment here holds up over time. So, there's, there's no fluff here. I mean, it's one point four percent that we're asking for above and beyond, but it's really needed.
But if you take it even further in actual dollars, you're talking about eighty-three thousand dollars out of the six million dollar budget.
Right.
So, to me, I don't wanna, you know, pinch pennies here, but. But you are, exactly. You are.
You can keep going. The pie chart, we all love the pie chart. It shows here, you hear that, that, you know, the big thing we're talking about in our budget is salaries and benefits. Other pieces of the pie, the tuition to the Amherst School District is the big one, the big green one. We've got student services, is that kind of teal color, the teal piece of the pie. We've got administrative costs, you know, coming in almost the same as transportation. Technology is a tiny slice, food service. And then the curriculum piece. So, just if you like to see it as a pie, you can see really what the major drivers are here. Our revenue review, so projected, we can move to the next slide. So, our projected revenues are here. We have a very small difference in food service projected. The grants should be flat. The, the federal, state and local revenue changes are really small. And the prior year fund balance is, is where we have a deficit, one ninety-seven, four eighty-one.
So, do we not have tuition students anymore? The kids from Amherst that were coming here?
I think we do have a few.
Yeah.
Still, yep.
So, where is that?
So, that gets offset in our AMS tuition, in the tuition.
Yes.
Exchange itself, it gets taken out there. So, even though there's an increase there, if that's, there's already a slight offset with the students coming here.
Yeah, it's, it's about almost seventy-four thousand dollars in an offset.
How much do you anticipate getting in title one?
Alright, so.
So, the, the one piece that the board's been talking about, if you've been able to tune into any of our meetings as we've been like leading up to this, is that you know, something that, that we could look at. We could look at in the future is a tax rate stabilization fund. The board is not looking to propose this this year, but it's something that we think the town should consider, um, for the for the school district. Um, and the reason being that when there's a big difference in revenue like this. Um, having funds in a tax rate stabilization fund could help to smooth the bump. So towns can do it, right, Mount Vernon as a town can use a tax rate stabilization fund if there's money in the fund. Um, school districts can also do that, we don't have one established. So the process would be that it would have to go on as a warrant article to establish the fund. And then it would have to go in to fund the established fund. We are not asking to even create the fund yet, but we think that that might be something in the future to consider. To help to offset things like this, because, uh, we all know that dollars like this can really impact our town, because it's.
Okay.
It can make a big difference.
Title one is, um, flat at six thousand five hundred.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so in that, and I don't know if you want to talk about it now, wait a minute, I gotta write that down first. Right now, we have a Mount Vernon. Tuition contingency fund, which was established in twenty seventeen.
Correct.
To help balance, keep a tax rate balance. And it hasn't been touched or added to to twenty seventeen, so why don't you use that this year? To, and it only, the, uh, school board are the agents to expend, so with the school board's. Agreement, they could, after the first, after July first, could vote to expend that money. To offset, it's only thirty thousand, but at least it would be an offset to the current balance.
Yeah, so we are going to get to a capital reserve fund review shortly, can I, are you okay holding that question, and then we'll kind of run through it?
I didn't know.
As we do, we've, we dug in, Eileen, and so we'll kind of go through the rationale if you're okay holding on to that.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
So how many students are to meet in?
There are three currently, Tom, you might.
Yeah, three.
I think it's three.
And so does that count in our apportionment for the SAU?
Might have to get back to you on that, I think.
Does it, she knows about them, so I'm sure she's knowing it correctly, but we would need to talk to her to keep.
Can we get back to you on that? Pretty positive, yes, because it's been.
It's well known.
Yeah, 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 it's existing, but. I don't want to say it's not be right, so.
It's great question, thank you for that.
Okay. Projected, okay, so, um, the projected tax rate impact on the budget, um. Is listed here, so it would show you what the the tax effort, um, total tax effort would be, a dollar eighty-four, so you take the total appropriation at the top. Less the revenue on the second line, less the adequacy adequacy aid, um, less the statewide property tax. And then you get your, uh, estimated tax effort.
People are gonna lose their minds.
In charge?
People are gonna lose their minds, sure.
It's a hard, it's a hard one this year. But as you can see, I mean, there's really, there's, what can we do about it? It's contractual obligations across the board, we have. Couple hundred thousand dollars of actual like play there, but it's still even like, if we're looking to maintain our investment. We really believe it needs to be done, so it's a hard one to swallow. But this board and this administrative staff has done a really good job, I believe, in doing the best that we can with what we've been dealt this year.
We've been so successful at avoiding a default budget.
I know, and I would love to, I would love to be successful again this year, again, it's gonna, the the difference is gonna be pennies, so the story here is again. Pennies do count, I'm not, I'm not, um, minimizing that. But we've done a really good job of being able to maintain this facility and look and be looking forward, um. I think there are some things we can do again with that tax rate stabilization discussion in the future, um, but for this year. The numbers are what they are, unfortunately, like I said, I I've been dreading having to tell you these numbers tonight, I asked everybody else to present these numbers. But they are what they are.
So the. Concern I have is that. We only have a few people here, and these are the only people who know.
So.
So we need to communicate this in well in advance and answer anybody's questions to make a real concerted effort to explain. All the work that you did to control the cost and this is just part of it, but.
Yep.
People are gonna lose their minds.
So and I'm gonna try and do a really good job in the letter from the board, if that's gonna go into the report this year. And they're trying to do a really good job there explaining this for anybody who is only looking at that document. Um, other than that, as you know, it's difficult to get community members to come and participate. So we are always looking for ways to be able to get that out there, um, you know, certainly if you have talking points with your friends, neighbors, community members. I urge you to, you know, strike up the conversation so that people can be more informed, um. The unfortunate thing here is that it really like we're locked into so much of this, that there's not much we can do unless there's major legislative change. Um, like funding changes, I'd love to find a solution, but.
I truly understand that you can't do anything about it, but. When it comes as a surprise that someone's gonna get an extra five thousand dollars in their tax bill, people are gonna lose their minds.
Yeah.
So we need to. Find a way, whether it's. The Mount Vernon flyer, or whether it's an email. With all the students' parents or something, but. I'm afraid of what will happen when people get these.
So I'm wondering if we do something similar, um, looking at at the three of you, if we do something similar like the bullet points. At with our board notes, you know, with the with the minutes, um, to be able to put that out, I think we could probably pull something like that together to sort of. Give the highlights and then maybe that gives people talking points, um. Facebook seems to be the place that people go, as you know, with our board communication policy, it's very difficult for any single board member to. Respond there.
Yeah.
Um, so that's why coming to the board meeting really is the best way to communicate with the board, and I know that's very challenging. Um, but we'll do our best to summarize and get those, you know, the high level bullet points out so that people are as aware as we can. Make them in summary, and then other than that, it's really looking at at the slides, looking at the presentation and trying to get informed that way. I wish there was a better way, the clip notes version.
Amy and I talked about, if you wanted to, we could develop a draft, the board can look at it frequently ask questions.
Oh, yeah.
Just, you know, um, I used to do that for the budgets that I do, just just, you know, the why, just usually. Page your, and it to get the nuts and bolts, cause you're right, you know, the more, you just have to be honest with this community about telling where they're at. And and as long as they're informed, we're okay with the result, the problem is if they're not informed, right?
Right.
When we can help, and when we can, we can communicate with our friends and neighbors.
Yeah, absolutely.
We've also discussed, um, utilizing like the transfer station and trying to like have more face time and direct people to resources. So something I know like that that I had on trying to do over the next couple of months. To try and at least, like we said, we can't be representative of the whole board, like people were having those individual conversations. But at least we can direct people to resources. Show that we're trying to have that conversation.
And that does paperwork, yeah, so that people can look at it.
Yep. We're trying really hard to get the word out.
I, I know that you're up against the wall, but.
Yeah.
I.
I'm worried.
Well, I am too, but what I question is, you're operating beautifully with this number of teachers. This number of extras, this number of paras, this number, what the nurse, the guidance counselor, the, um. Literacy, reading specialist, the math interventionist, there are so many subsets. Are you sure that all of them are absolutely needed at the level at which they're being used?
So Eileen, I mean, we have asked the administrative team here to do a comprehensive review of the time spent, like in classrooms, the time spent with students. Um, especially like we did a comprehensive special ed review as well, of literally the time that that those specialists are spending. With individual students in classrooms with teachers, on lesson planning, all of those things, yes, they actually need more hours, not less. So I mean, we're like, what's being done here is kind of miraculous with the, with the resources that are here and the time that they're allocated. They could probably use what like fifty percent more than what than what we give them.
Of course, it is just like your house can use a whole lot more, but you find you can get along with lots.
I don't.
Out a decrease in performance.
And I I get that, we we've analyzed it, we've looked at it, uh, it works, it is right proportioned, it is tight. Uh, and we are utilizing, we're viewing, yes, I can look in the eye and say what what we have here is produce these results and what we need to continue these results. It is not overstaffed, it is right sized for this community, it is a challenge because of what we articulated in. It, I absolutely concerned that if if this community decides to reorganize this place, it will impact achieve, and it works. This school is working, I'm with you, I get it, it's a hard year, um, but it happens in small schools where. But a couple of budget items can have a significant impact on the budget.
It is, when you you have a class of twelve students. Or a class of thirteen students, and they need a math person to come in, and they need a reading person to come in. To get that few students to perform, I'm a teacher by trade.
Awesome.
It just is dumbfounded.
But the class size isn't twelve, it's it's not, if we can go back to look, it it isn't, um, and I get that. You know, the area right now, uh, the kindergarten class is the only class that looks at a twenty-five split in two. Um, kindergarten is the toughest class to predict, right, because we we don't have the retaining factor in the projection, we'll show it to you, we'll get it to you.
Okay.
It's probably already there, um, but we looked, Amy and I looked today, is there a twenty that we could split, we could go to one? Um, we've looked at this today because we just got this tech stuff today, but we looked at it through the budget process. Uh, it is a unique place, it is a unique investment in this community, and it's working, we have the right amount of care for each child, the highest expectations. And the ability to support kids in growth on all areas of the spectrum. And that's what this board cares about, they care about every single kid that walks through the store, and they care about every single kid and support growth in every area in this kid. Is this is the configuration that is necessary, is it affordable, that's what we ask you, right, that's gonna be the community's gonna do, but. This is what works, and and believe me, as your, as your cup of coffee, as your insurance superintendent, this wasn't the year for this, for me. I wasn't hoping for this one.
So I missed what we were, it's not five thousand dollars, it's five hundred dollars.
Don't scare us more. But no, but it'd be five hundred dollars matters, right? Um, okay, if we can move on to the a capital reserve fund review, I think you still, um, circle back and answer Eileen's question, so. Um, these are the existing capital reserve funds, there's the property maintenance fund at the top, um, our balance is a hundred and sixteen thousand, you've seen the table, the chart. And we'll look at it again in a moment, um, our re- recommended contribution request, normally we've been requesting fifty thousand dollars. We have made a concerted effort to drop that this year, because we do have such a such a large impact elsewhere. Um, but again, maintaining our commitment to maintain the the facilities, so we're asking for thirty-five thousand dollars to fund that fund. If there is money in the unreserved fund balance, okay? The second one would be the students with disabilities fund, um, that one has a balance of thirty-two thousand. Um, our recommended contribution there is twenty thousand, and again, um, we put the the potential tax impact to the right. So you can see what it would, what it would do, what it would not return to you, okay? Um.
Can I comment on that one?
Sure.
Before you go to the next one?
Yeah.
The Students for Disabilities was established in twenty sixteen with an amount of thirty thousand, it has not been touched. I don't see any, if we haven't needed it in twelve, no, twenty sixteen, six years. I don't see why we're adding to it.
Times have changed, Eileen, um, but with with, so gi- give me a second, so the reason is because. Even one student can change our budget. By over a hundred thousand dollars, so, and and that's what we're seeing, that's the impact that you're seeing in student services. So if we can add to this fund and get it to at least fifty thousand. Then we can at least smooth out the impact of of even one student coming in, we can't do much if it's more than one. But we could potentially smooth out the impact of that, so that's the reason why we would be asking to to fund this at twenty thousand. We haven't used it in the past again, because it's been miniscule, but what we're seeing here now is as more students with special needs and with with. Changing needs come in, we have to be willing to look at what we can do to smooth out the impact of that. We're legally obligated and and we are committed as a as a community and a board to educating each child appropriately. This is one way that we can do that with less impact to the community overall, right, to help to keep it smooth. So that's why we would be asking to fund that now, instead of not touching it, or instead of withdrawing the funds this year.
Well, I wasn't going for withdrawing, but I just felt to, it's it's the same speech we heard six years ago.
And but now we're we're, we are looking at actively adding to it again, to make sure that we are trying to be as physically responsible as possible. To keep the things as moderate. To make the wave, not a tsunami, okay?
So this year, so what this does, this is reduces risk to freezing a budget for an unanticipated date. There was, um, a combination of entrances and exits in our schools this year. That allowed us not to access these funds, but there's, we we came so close and 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 look. Deep that in order to maintain implemented budget as his community supports, we need to put in some reverse to mitigate risk. Um, it really is, uh, the best fiduciary responsibility is to increase this fund to reduce risk and implement a budget that.
How much unreserved fund? Balance did we have last year that we were able to apply to some of these things?
The estimate? Or the actual last year, Amy can pull that in a moment.
Yeah, and I will tell you, I learned last night at the, at the, at the Soviet meeting, that these are in order of. Priority.
Correct.
I applaud you for putting the building first and the other things next.
Yep.
Because I think we learn. Every day from what goes on in Amherst.
Yeah.
Putting a priority on the building is the best way to educate.
Absolutely, and that is why we're still asking for thirty-five thousand to put into that fund, not bringing it down lower than that. We want to make sure that we're maintaining at least a hundred thousand dollars in that fund, um, closer to to one fifty is where our facilities, um, you know. Team feels more comfortable based on the projects that are anticipated.
There was.
So last year, it was, um, the offset taxes with three hundred forty-seven thousand dollars, that's after the fifty thousand dollar contribution to the CNA. So last year, there was four hundred thousand dollars, three hundred fifty to tax, basically to offset taxes, fifty thousand to the CNA. Um, we are, the capital needs to set in the reserve facility trust, I'm sorry, and, um, this year. We are committing to a hundred fifty thousand dollars to offset taxes, because of what you were concerned. And so, uh, and above the hundred and fifty, while this would go first, then we'd have a hundred fifty to offset taxes. We are hoping we have more than that, um, but we want to be very honest and transparent and conservative in our estimates, because we want to make sure. Our largest impact of taxes, right, we just want to get bigger after we talk, tell you about it. And and I think, if I could just add, the students with disabilities fund, that's not a discretionary. Line item, so if a student were to come into Mount Vernon and needed those services, we are mandated to provide those services. So this in effect is prudent, is something as he explained. You know, even though we wouldn't like the relative small amount in historical, I mean, from a historical perspective, go back. To the taxpayer, we would still have an ability to shore up some of these accounts and give some money back, uh, to the constituents, so. Uh, we're kind of trying to serve two mastings here, so.
It's risk management.
Correct, absolutely.
Um, same thing is what I'm gonna tell you about the health and dental insurance fund, this is one that is proposed, this would be a new fund. Recommended contribution this year would be fifteen thousand, again, from the unassigned fund balance, and the reason is to reduce risk. Um, this again would provide support for unanticipated plan changes, so if we have a staff member who comes in and changes their health or dental insurance election. That can swing widely, and that swing, we are obligated to to, um, to do it. But it we we wouldn't be budgeting for it, we can't, you can't budget for it if you don't know it's gonna be a change, so again, this would be if, um. If a staff member makes a change to their elections, which they're entitled to do in certain situations, or if they're a new staff member. They have a change in circumstance, those things can happen, so this would potentially cover one change. Okay, that's the reason for this fund, we just, again, feeling like we're trying to do the best job that we can. To prevent waves from being tsunamis and just make them little waves.
So by add the first three, that adds up to seventy, seventy thousand unassigned fund balance, what do you expect that balance total to be?
We're gonna get there again in a minute, so we're gonna come to, so this is just the review of the ones that are currently, um, existing and the and the one new one that we'd like.
So the tuition contingency fund, I know there's a program in the state that people can pull their kids out of public school and get assistance to send them to a private school. Any denominator, I think like, do we have states who are exercising that option in Mount Vernon?
So we would only know about that if they. Yeah, if they came, they could leave and we wouldn't know that they were accessing that account. We would only know that they were accessing that account if they are a homeschool student and we're coming here to our school for like our PE music and so forth. Which we have a a large number of homeschool students. For like our P E music and so forth, which we have a a large number of homeschool students. Who do come, um, typically accessing mostly our specials. Um, if those students, because they are in our system, if they were accepting an E F A, we would be aware of that.
So, say what the E F A.
Yeah, so that's the Educational Freedom Account, which is this fund you were referencing from the state.
Okay, so do we have money in that fund that they can access?
No, that comes directly from the state.
And where is the state getting the money from?
They get part of, they they take the money as part of this uh, adequacy to what what wasn't. What for public school, they budgeted fourteen million dollars.
What they're giving us or state aid would be reduced by those tuitions?
Yeah, um, it's fourteen million dollars are going to the E F A account as opposed to going to public schools. Or, I mean, yes, I prefer that they went to public school.
You're saying it's already been taken away from the schools to establish a fund?
Yeah, this year, my understanding is, it's the the program was fourteen million dollars.
Okay, so. The impact to Mount Vernon would be zero.
Well, it would all be, the legislation would have to change, so we get the adequacy based on the law. Um, and so we do get the adequacy, now there's fourteen million dollars that are going to the private s- school, the E F As. So they'd have to change the law to take that fourteen million and apply it to public.
My question is, will we get a surprise if five of our kids decide to go to five of our kids in the great, great category? Income wise, decide to do?
No, so it does, if if five kids decided to go to another school, it would not, we would not, um. We would lose adequacy because they're no longer attending here, but we don't have to pay that value, that voucher is not of our bill, it goes directly from the state. Well, I I don't think I helped you on that one.
Because the state has already taken the funds away from funding public schools, so they've already taken the money away and now they've created this pot. And they're divvying that out by the pot, so that's why I wouldn't impact, I mean, now if they decide to increase that pot. It would have had the state contributions to public schools further, but that hit is already happened.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, I know it's strange.
Yeah, so it's a really, really.
To get back to my original question, now that we are talking, this tuition coin contingency fund. Which was set up to offset or to keep taxes level. Why are you not considering spending that this year?
So we, we did consider spending it, but we thought it was kind of a drop in the bucket this year. That it's really not gonna, it's really not gonna do too much, and again, it could help to level things off in the future, we could potentially look at that, I mean, can. We could, we did discuss, we did discuss it, Eileen, but we decided that we felt as a board that it was better to hold that there. For the future, that that was the decision at this, at the board level, right?
So do, so what would it need maybe to, the tax rate to go up ten percent?
No, well, ideally, I think we wanted to, we wanted to increase this fund anyway, but we didn't wanna ask you to increase this fund this year. And so we were holding the ask on that fund until next year, potentially, when somebody else can sit here and say to you, we'd really like to bring that up to fifty thousand. But I'm not asking you that tonight because I can't look at you and ask you that tonight, if that makes sense.
Well, we gave permission to the school board, so it's up to them.
We did, we did discuss it, um.
And Sarah, I think you also said you wanted to hear from the public at public hearing.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, anybody else in the public hearing like to comment? You know, don't worry about offending me.
Well, the question is, if this is a rainy day fund, how rainy is it right now, is it is rainy enough?
Right, is it raining now, that is a question.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, and so, I mean, my, my personal opinion is, yeah, it's. Any drop in the bucket, is a drop in the bucket, it is important, but it's not a very big difference, so I don't think I would notice it when we're another. If, uh, four students move in this summer into, that I create, create a Mount Vernon. But we would struggle.
Five people left.
But that's.
I mean, you know.
But but this is for the unanticipated needs, so we can maintain and support the budget that it's improved, and that is approved, but again, this was the discussion. Um, because we.
Only one student.
Yeah.
One point two.
That's all right.
One point two students maybe, or one point four, and that's why it's not much, but if a student moves in, it does help.
Right, so the, so, okay, to get back to the. This adds up to seven, when I say thirty-five, four.
We do have another ask that we're gonna get to, so we're just running through these ones first, and then.
So you don't wanna tell me what the.
I'm gonna get there.
Okay.
Just give me a second, so, probably two minutes. So, um, our next slide is just Article Three, it's a statement of Article Three, which is the contribution to the Property Maintenance Fund that we just talked about. This is the thirty-five thousand dollar contribution instead of the fifty thousand dollar contribution. Again, this would, this is um, the next one after the budget, so this would be funded first. Um, uh, to your point earlier, this would be funded first on the unexpendited fund balance, okay? Because we're prioritizing our facilities, so thirty-five thousand dollar ask instead of fifty thousand dollar ask.
Okay.
Um, the long-term facilities plan is our next slide.
I just wanna make sure, so we will vote the article at the end.
At the end, if we're okay with that.
It's fine, just wanna make sure we're on the same.
We're all okay with that?
Yeah.
The long-term facilities plan, um, a- again, these are the items that are coming up. This is the reason why we're again asking for the thirty-five thousand, we feel that we're okay right now to ask for thirty-five instead of fifty because of the projects that are coming. There's, uh, you know, nothing huge, we do wanna make sure that we maintain a hundred thousand dollars in there minimum. Um, and this is the reason why, okay, so that's. I think we're doing a really good job here.
Excellent.
Okay, let's move on to the next slide, um, the duct replacement project, this is in process. Um, the targeted replacement is between F Y twenty-two and F Y twenty-five, estimated cost is two hundred and forty-three grand. We have some S R three funds, um, fifty-five thousand, um, and then we would be looking to fund the rest. Um, you know, with the uh, with that property maintenance fund, okay? Um, so this is again, just looking at that project in particular, so this is digging out that line from the prior slide. This is the next big one. Um, the long-term fac- facilities funding plan, again, here just shows you the breakdown. Of why we would be adding the amounts that we're asking for when we're asking for them. So you'll see in F Y twenty-four, instead of the fifty thousand that we have been requesting, we're dropping it to thirty-five. Um, that would bring our balance to one fifty-one, then with um, with the hundred thousand expenditure, um. You know, propose next year to finish phase two of the duct replacement, that would bring us back down to one oh one. Um, which is why we would be asking for fifty thousand, so do you see, like, it's just the give and take of filling this. Uh, filling this fund so that we can maintain our facilities appropriately. Really good plan here, we're really solid.
Excellent.
Okay. I'd love to hear that, Eileen, thank you.
Well, that's the way they should work, you put money in for a purpose and then you use it, but.
That's what we're really trying to do, I mean, trust that this board is really focused on that, so when you're looking at these things, know that that colors all of our. Opinions, like this, this is what we're looking to do, it's not just that one fund, it's all of it, that's who you've got here. So Article Four, this would be the next one in priority, in order of priority. Um, this is the Mount Vernon Village School renovation or addition study. Um, this is the, this is where the additional funding is coming from, I mean, that we're asking for there, this is sixty thousand dollar ask. Um, shall the Mount Vernon School District raise and appropriate a sum of up to sixty thousand dollars, so not to exceed sixty thousand. For the purpose of developing an architectural and engineering study, including a conceptual design, program study, cost estimate. Site review for a renovation or addition to the Mount Vernon Village School, the sum would come from the unex- on a, on assigned fund balance from the surplus. Um, and again, no new amount would be raised from taxation, if we move to the next slide. Kristen, I'll let you jump in with this one if you'd like.
Sure.
This is the reason, this is the why behind that ask.
So this is the next step from the middle school committee that did all of the really important work evaluating what our options are, because what's really key about this here. Is that we do have our contract negotiations coming up, so we really need to understand. What all of our costs are as we go into those contract negotiations to establish that cost. Um, so that our community can be more informed as to what our options are, uh, with the changes coming forward with the um. Renovations that need done at Amherst, uh, and also with the changes and projections from our student enrollment. So what this one article is going to do is just allow us to not choose a single path forward. But it allows us to put a place, a place a price tag on the options. Established by the middle school community committee and also established from the survey that we sent out to the uh, community. So we can put a price tag on those options and have that further dialogue. Uh, and decide as a community what the next steps forward are. So no decisions be made out of this, this is an evaluation for us to actually. Know what the potential impacts will be to meet the school's needs moving forward and as the changes occur with Amherst Middle School.
So could I ask, I know that Amherst had their meeting Monday. Um, what did they decide to do about a warrant article for the replacement of? Middle, the middle renovations of the middle school?
They voted to send, um, to deliver the, the plan to renov- to renovate slash replace the card book.
But not A M.
A M S, um, right, A M S, they are doing through the C N A. Plan, uh, contributions and changes over time.
Okay, so there's no bond?
No bond.
Middle school this year.
Correct, just a bond to the elementary school.
Wonder, the key part is when we are renegotiating our contracts, like, that is gonna happen, and then once it happens, like, that's the tag it is. And then we, it's gonna be very hard to catch up on this next step after that, so if they put a a button on the article next year. Then, you know, everything has to move forward at the same time, thanks, that's why it's such critical timing.
Right, and the other piece of that is regard, even though the middle school project, the funding isn't going towards that. With the, if their project goes forward for the elementary school, realize that fifth grade would be moving back down, so the pool at A M S gets smaller. So the portion that Mount Vernon students make up is larger of that pool, so our tuition agreement is based. On the average daily membership and what our percentage is there, so it's automatically going to increase. So that's where we're, that's why this is important, and as you know, you were on that committee, so you know the very diligent, um, deep work that you did. Um, the reason for this ask is to continue that so that we can actually put numbers and say, yes, it's viable for this community, no, it is not. Um, it gives the community options, if we do not fund this and do not do this work. We can't, we can never say, so there's, our hands are tied if we do not fund this. I don't know another way to say that better.
But, uh, but I think. The history of how we ended up with Soviet High School was lost in the contract negotiations because we were going. We were sending our kids by tuition to Milford. And they were charging us a lot of money and they wanted to have us pay for. The facility without owning the facility, so we decided, to hell with you, we'll make our own school. Which we did with Amherst. So Amherst is is doing the same thing to us. And running on it for the state legislature, I was so irritated to hear him. To his own horn for tagging Mount Vernon for the renovation cost for that school. So when we renegotiate the contract, we should get that clause out of.
Definitely a talking point to consider. It's noted.
A lot of talking point.
It's noted.
It's. It's a must, yeah.
And here's the thing that you need to know, it is transparent, so when we were in negotiations. We all, like, it's part of the contract, it's part of the, of the uh, formula, it's discussed. Every aspect of that contract gets discussed during negotiations, uh, it was just not something that we could change at that time. So it it's always all discussed.
It was something that was added to the contract.
It was not added to this contract, not, not to the current, not to the one, this one was basically almost a continuation with small changes for accounting. With the middle school.
No.
I was on the, I did it, I did the negotiations, you can blame me or thank me either way, but I can tell you that that portion did not change. From the last contract to this one, it may have been different from what it was in the beginning, that I don't know, because I was not on prior contract negotiations.
Okay.
I would love to get the history from you, maybe, can we have tea sometime?
No, but you're, it's really important, and that's the whole, all of this is important, all of this is really critical and is impacting, it has very significant impacts. Especially when we're looking at these enrollment projections, because I mean, like, Eileen, you're talking about, you know, add one student, maybe five leave. We're not looking at five leaving, we're looking at significant increases in enrollment over the next ten years. Which is concerning, we're seeing that in terms of what building is happening right now, so we're definitely seeing it as a community's growing.
When is the Amherst tuition agreement, how, what is the end date for the Amherst tuition agreement?
Two years.
Where?
It was a five years, I mean.
I know, but I.
Sign.
We're in year two, I believe, I think we're in year two of five.
Yes.
And we have to give them two years notice if we wanna get out.
That's why this has to.
That's why this has to happen now, so again, the timing, and when we negotiated that contract, that was the reason for the five years, not the standard ten. We knew that the building project was in play. And we decided as a board that it was very important that our community have options there not to get locked into a ten-year. Um, a ten-year deal, so that's the reason why it's five years with the option to extend or the option to say, no, thank you.
I would even argue that doing this, establishing these costs is a negotiating point, because it shows that we're serious and considering all of our options. That we're not only like talking about it, but we're putting our money where our mouth is, and we're actually moving forward critically evaluating our options, so it may also help in that aspect.
And just in in spite of that, you can see from the uh, enrollment projections, we're going up. I mean, this building has a capacity, potential capacity issue, so, I mean, it's not gonna happen next year. But steadily increasing here, we're going to have a space problem, likely going to have a space problem here sometime in the future. So this, um, this study would also give us key information on how to handle that. So it's, it's kind of a twofer.
Yeah, so is this, is this study? To, with the idea of in, of now having middle school in, or our, I'm sorry, having grade seven and eight. Here in town?
Potential, yes.
This to looking at, how can this building be expanded regardless?
Yes, all of the above.
But middle school is such a.
Yes.
Concept.
And so.
Adding on.
Yeah.
Actually classroom.
Yes, and so that's what this would, we, so there's two things happening here, Eileen, and that's why it's a two for, maybe a three for. Uh, if if we hear from, from Mr. Chamberlain, um, it's really looking at all of the things that are potentially coming down, coming down the road. Right, what happens, can we bring, can we bring our seventh and eighth graders back here, what does that look like to have either K eight? Or to do it as in a middle school model, don't know, we need to, we need to find out. What happens if we end up with the building projects in town or a baby boom? Um, and those estimates come to fruition, what happened, where are we gonna put those kids, so yes, and, and.
So, it's it's middle school, it's enrollment, and while we have them, we've also taken a look at there's some program efficiencies we can gain within expansion. For example, um, just we, we uh, contract out all preschool services. And remember, and talking with it with, it may be cheaper to have our own preschool, but you gotta figure out the cost of how much you would add, so this is just conceptual. But we wanna make sure that we u- we use these funds to take a look at middle school, take a look at enrollment, and are there any other programmatic efficiencies we can gain only for cost savings? It's but we, but we, our fiduciary responsibility is to look at cost savings and is it cheaper to have a an in-house preschool program? If we have another uh, uh, room added or not, but this is a wonderful approach that, you know, provide free options for public presentation. One that include a, a public preschool option, four and two additions for enrollment going forward. This is just helps with, one of the things that we've heard from Mount Vernon, planning is very important. This is a tool to help us plan long-term, middle school shorter, longer-term enrollment, maybe some programs.
So three options for public presentation, so one would be for this, say, three, I'm just gonna use weird numbers. Three hundred square feet if we wanna bring up seven and eight. If we only wanna expand to, it's maybe gonna be two hundred square feet, and all need to bring up, it's gonna be one hundred.
I would, I would be hesitant to say what those three options are.
Yeah, yeah.
Because, because it's gonna depend on what's even.
But yes, there would be three options.
There'll be three options, but we can't say it is what you are gonna be option A, B, C. Because we may find that option A is not even possible with the land that we have, right, I don't think we can, am I?
If you're buying three options, what those options are yet to be determined.
Yeah.
What we've learned here, what we've learned especially from our neighbors, uh, is that. Planning really gives you options, um, and gives you information to make informed decisions, that's what this is. That's what this gives us, and that's what this gives our town, and really, it's a now thing, this is like, it, timing wise. Can't hate to be the parrot of the news, but it's a now thing, right? And that's the reason why we're bringing it forward, I don't wanna have to ask you for sixty grand, but that's why I am. I'm comfortable enough being uncomfortable saying to you, we need this, if that helps you. Um, Article Five would be that Students with Disabilities Fund, we already discussed the reason for that, twenty thousand dollars, again, to help to smooth. Things out, um, if we, if we have uh, increased student need. Article Six is the Health and Dental Insurance Fund, um, that I already explained, the fifteen thousand dollars in case there is a change on in election. Um, and that would, so that would be the last one funded. Uh, and then we have a a general overview of the appropriations. Um, so this just brings us, we've got our F Y twenty-three and F Y twenty-four operating budgets with the difference of four seventy-six, um, two hundred. The Property Maintenance Fund, um, last year was funded at fifty thousand, this year we're asking for thirty-five, so that's, um, that's less fifteen thousand. The renovation addition would be a one-time fee, so that would be the one-time impact of sixty thousand dollars. The Students with Disabilities Fund is, would be, um. The Students with Disabilities Fund is would be, um again, it was not funded in F Y twenty-three, we're asking for twenty thousand. The Health and Dental Insurance again um was not created before, so that's a new ask at fifteen thousand dollars. So the the total ask would be five fifty-six um two hundred.
The last one is the only one that's not. From un- unsigned balance, no.
They all are.
They all are.
They all are.
Okay.
And that's with the guarantee of hoping to give back a hundred and fifty thousand. And then looking at this from the rest. So doing our doing the best. So we are hoping that there is a minimum of a hundred and fifty thousand to give back to the taxpayer to offset the tax rate. And then the rest would would come from. The un- unexpendable fund balance from the U F B.
So was it seventy that I had?
So sixteen, seventy, eighty, ninety, uh no, sorry.
I didn't have the last.
One thirty.
So we'd actually, we would want hundred and thirty plus.
Plus the one fifty, right.
And last year we.
So one thirty.
So we're looking at two eighty, we're aiming for, hoping the U F B is two eighty.
What I want.
I knew it, the two eighty, we're hoping for two eighty.
Right.
I'm hoping for three fifty, but like two eighty, like two eighty would make us happy. Cause then we can fund these things if the town agrees, which I hope people will agree, because I think it's really reasonable, I think it's necessary. For us, I think it gives us a path forward in many ways, I know it's hard to ask for it. But I'm asking, we are asking.
And I think it's really important to explain what the tax impact is.
Yep.
Because I'm gonna help get some of these big.
Yeah.
When you think of the two eighty, well, you're hoping this year to two eighty left over, that's what you're hoping for.
Yeah.
Then it would seem to me that, can you go back?
One time.
Go back one slide.
I I chose all of them.
The appropriation?
All the, yes, also together.
I'm sorry, which one?
The appropriate, that one?
Yeah, no, well, you show the articles. One through.
It didn't have the middle. It didn't have the middle school one on it, this one does.
Oh.
Cause that one was just looking at existing.
Cause that's the one-time fund, not.
Okay. So the maintenance fund was gonna be thirty-five. Sixty.
Yeah.
The disabilities, which is top number five, right?
Yeah.
You're, that's gonna be twenty.
It's up there.
Yeah, which is right there.
I'm just trying to get these in order, sorry. And the health and dental is fifteen.
You got it.
So what I'm driving at is. You had more than enough saved this year. For your disabilities and your dental. So why wouldn't you take the chance of being able to save that much again next year?
I don't know that I'm. Say that again for me, Eileen.
If you were conservative enough this year.
Yeah.
To keep to save two hundred and eighty.
Yeah.
Okay. And that you're asking us to take fifteen of that to put in a, why are you asking for these minute amount, say the twenty and the fifteen? When you've been able to save it this year, we're not anticipating that you'd be able to save the same next year.
We we are anticipating, that's why we would take it from the unanticipated fund balance.
Well, no, you're saying next year we're gonna be right tight, we're not gonna have any extra money at all. So we want you to put some away in case we need it.
No, not necessarily, so the Students with Disabilities Fund and the Health and Dental is if there's a swing, right, so that's it's a change in need, right? If a student moves in who has um who has a a special services need, that's not anticipated, we don't know that until they're here. Same thing if a if a staff member changes their health or dental election, we don't know that.
No, good, I'm.
I it must be.
Yeah, we're, we need to talk.
Oh, yeah, always.
We're not.
Anytime.
Health and dental, we typically have those changes. Anyway.
Correct.
When the expenses anyways, it's usually comes out of one of their line item. So we're actually saving or at least. Keeping the integrity of certain line items by allocating fifteen thousand dollars for it, cause otherwise we'd be scrambling to try to find where to get that money from.
We're trying to be really transparent here, Eileen, with where the money is, what it's used.
These are real costs.
Right.
They're real costs.
So if there's money left over, um um. Do the voters have to tell you, you can use it for this?
Yes.
So, yes.
So you could, for instance, say yes to the Property Maintenance Fund, please, yes to the Renovation Addition Fund, pretty, pretty please. Yes to the Students with Disabilities Fund, and you could say not right now to the Health and and Dental Insurance, but maybe next year you could say to me. I wouldn't love it. But I'd still smile at you. And I would still be happy, you know what I mean, like, you can choose, you could say no to any one of these, you could say no to all of them. I would highly encourage you and highly encourage the community not to do that. Because again, we're trying, like I pay taxes, we all pay taxes too, I don't, I don't like this, but it is what it is.
So if we didn't vote for this, all the money would come back to the town.
Correct.
So. That's, we already paid the money.
You already did, right, it's already out, you already approved it, we're just trying to use it for the best purpose to help to lessen the hurt down the road.
But it will cost you more if they ship.
It isn't gonna cost me anymore.
It's not gonna cost you.
Gonna get it back.
You're just not gonna get it.
That's the misconception. If you don't vote for this. To take that sixty thousand. That sixty thousand is returns to the taxpayer.
That's right.
So you're getting it back.
Next.
Right away.
Not this year.
Yes, you will, you will, well, because of the way the taxes are figured, you will get half of that back. On your twenty this year's tax bill. The second half, because the school.
It's next year.
It's years. Back the next year.
In in any of it.
Yeah, it has to come back.
I think it's a matter of like, would you rather be charged more in taxes, rather get a bigger tax bill because unexpected costs happen? Or would you rather have a smaller return on your tax bill to buffer the unexpected?
Yeah, do you want it back or do you wanna spend it, and you got it in your pocket, so which way do you want it?
But but again, some of those are just to shore up some of these costs, they're not necessarily, again, to. Her point, we're really trying to take out the highs. Smooth the highs out and bring up the lows a little bit to more stable, predictable amounts going forward. Because without doing some of these costs, again, you run the risk. He said this is insurance, you run the risk that, okay, I'm gonna gain maybe a little bit this year. But maybe two years down the road, and we haven't funded some of these accounts, you're looking at a much bigger peak. When you take out, and again, if you just look at strictly just the budget increase year over year. Regardless of what you do with the un- unexpendable fund dollars, regardless, you're looking at eight point one percent increase, regardless. So it's it's not pretty.
Amy, can you confirm the time of deliberative session? Six o'clock.
I believe it's eight, I believe it's six o'clock.
I mean, I have it at six in my calendar, but I just wanna make sure everybody, I believe it's six o'clock, well, I have the right, I think I have it at six o'clock.
Very good question, wanna make sure it's not.
Yeah, that's what it says on the.
I have it at six P M.
Six o'clock, there's a.
There's a board meeting.
Yeah.
At eight following delivery.
Yes, yeah.
But the the actual deliberative session starts.
And it's here.
Yes, it is here in.
And so vegan is the day before. So Hagan High School, while you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Hagan High School is on the seventh, at six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Yeah. At. At Hagan High School, and we there.
So the end of last night's meeting was sort of a, I felt there that there's a citizens position, our petition. Yeah, so can someone tell us what it is?
Sure, we've had a a petition from someone, um petition both Amherst. School District and the South Weacon Cooperative School District, a petition warrant article to establish a tax cap of two percent. On bond of uh above total tax effort each year. So that uh there will be a public hearing on. Twenty to twenty-second.
Ours is the twenty-second.
So on twenty-second, we have a public hearing here, the South Weacon Board will be uh providing that opportunity to come and talk and learn about it. Um, and the it it will get to the ballot.
So it will be an article in our.
Yeah, correct, we're working with the moderator, it's it's. Uh, it's the first petition warrant article we've had in a little while, so we're working with monitoring legal counsel, make sure we're following all the procedures.
Um, and that's twenty-five person petition, is that the rule?
Yeah. Yeah.
Is that enforceable? Or is that advisory?
No, it's um it's the state follows the statute, if if sixty percent or more. A vote for it, then not the next fiscal year, we will be governed by a tax.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
There's questions about how to handle it at the deliberative, that's gonna work with moderator on, is this subject to any amendments at the deliberative or working now? We'll have that all figured out that by the time Goodwinry.
That hearing you mentioned, is that February twenty-second or January?
February, February, okay.
Yeah, it's weird, it comes after. This whole thing is weird to me, so we'll figure it out. It's governed by a very specific statute on our municipal tax cap. So it's outside of the school funding laws, it's a separate statute just about establishing a municipal educational tax cap.
It has to be held within certain days of the vote, so that's why it's on on those.
Well, that's right, deliberative session confused in it with voting day.
Yeah, no worries.
And something before, um hearings before voting day, that.
And so one piece that we didn't, do we have anyone on Zoom, we do, we do have the opportunity for public comment, if anybody on Zoom, um. Who's attending virtually has. Happy to hear from you, if you are.
No one.
So how much was the South Weacon budget up this year? Two point four percent, and how much was the Amherst budget up, the three point nine?
I'll just listen up to the right.
So um the final action that I think we need to take tonight, we've. We've been doing sort of an ongoing commentary, so I'm certainly open to public comment, if we have any further public comment, I don't wanna. Not give anyone the opportunity.
Public meeting notes.
Yes.
Okay, one of the things that I have a problem with. Is in the. In the dialogue telling people about the budget and the warrant articles is. You quite often, well, previously, they've said that the budget is this. We have this much of uh unexpendable fund balance. Uh unencumbered fund balance, and it will come off the budget. And then you also show that if the warrant articles. Are approved, it comes out of that fund balance. And it can't come, the same number of dollars can't come out of both. And if you don't spend it on the warrant articles, if you don't approve to spend it on the warrant articles. They're gonna get their money back. Off the budget. And it's been presented confusingly to the voters. And I don't know, there's gotta be a better way to present it. Other than saying if you vote for this, it has no tax impact. That is wrong.
It doesn't have impact on the current year, on the on the budget that's proposed right now, it would, it's it's a return based on the budget that you already voted for. So that's why it's it's semantics a little bit, and I know we've talked this through before, and I know it's a hard one. And I'm gonna defer to Amy if you've got some better way to say it, cause I always struggle with this concept, Eileen. But I I think it's because it's, we're talking about this year versus like what happened this year versus what was voted on last year. And this is just returning stuff that we were so great with the budget that there's leftover, and what do we do with the leftover? Does it get put towards projects because it's already been approved, or does it go back to to offset the next tax rate? Is my understanding.
But to say that it has no tax impact is in, basically incorrect.
Yeah, so I just wanna clarify, so we get the language directly from the Department of Revenue Administration.
So those ones are gonna holler at.
Yeah, well, let me just finish, let me just finish, so we get the language from them, it's approved, and what it says is no amount to be raised. From new taxation.
So.
Exact conversation, we are in your back pocket, we agree with.
So that is the language.
That is the language on the warrants, which we would like to.
If you go back to the warrant article, you can see it is. It does say that exactly.
Want me to show it to you?
Yeah, just because to say, you know.
Yep.
This South Weacon budget is up two point eight percent. They just wanted to make sure.
So here it is, I got this.
Tiny bit, I'm gonna have to put my.
To be raised from new taxation.
Alright. I wish it was more, but if that's what they say. So at what point? If you do your blur on the presenting the budget. How do you tell the taxpayer how much they're going to get back if the?
Well, we put it right there, this is the, even on the property maintenance, eleven cents is your tax impact.
If you don't do it.
If you don't do it.
If you vote that warrant down, if you say no to that warrant, the Property Maintenance Fund, then eleven cents. Comes back to you, if you say no to the Students with Disabilities Fund, see, we were thinking of you. Okay. If you're saying no to the Health and Dental, five cents, right, and there's no impact for the tuition contingency, because we're not asking, right?
And if you go to the renovation slide, yeah, it's there as well, yep. I added that for you, Eileen.
Yeah, we did this for you.
Did this for you.
Would not be the same without.
So you say we do listen to public input.
You do get the public input, and it's very helpful.
I do have one other question, and it wasn't covered by the Middle School Study Committee that I saw. But back when we did the enlargement of this building the last time. Uh, the state said you can't, you you have now have your student, your ratio of building to amount of land. That you can't expand on this site, I do not know if that's still true or not, but it should be checked prior to.
The this, the study committee will, the vendor that we hire will do that, and and there is opportunity to get waivers. Um, and the state has been very gracious in providing waivers for uh in town, this is considered an in-town school. Okay. But it is possible, but there is a process, so thank you, but it's not a total barrier, you can get waivers and and expand beyond your footprint based on the new regs.
Okay, but that question is important to answer before we can say what options A, B, and C are gonna be.
Now, let's say no to any tax.
We feel like we're good?
They can vote, send them all over.
So yeah, so um we need a vote to send um the warrant articles um as. Proposed, as written and presented um to the. To the deliberative session, thanks.
I will.
Make that motion, okay, a second. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Thank you so much. And we just closed the public hearing.
Good.